Welcome to the show. I want to say very special thanks to Ebony Ebony De Berry. Who's running for the first time ever on the Chicago School Board. First time in their Chicago history, correct? That's amazing. And Ebony, I would definitely would love for you to speak on your background, but you were a CPS student, CPS teacher, suburban teacher, several different summers in Illinois. And also on the nonprofit side, you've helped a lot of people become teachers. And you were, if I have this correct, not only did you go to Yale Elementary, but you had to keep Yale open. How, can you kind of go into that? Cause I was kind of just an observer. I didn't really, I wasn't involved in that battle. How? How close was Yale to being shut down and how did you keep it open?
Yeah. So in 2013, when Rahm Emanuel and the then elected, the then appointed school board decided to close 50 schools. There were several on the north side. There were three on the north side and uh I had just begun working at one north side and the education work and it was our call to keep all the schools open. We couldn't save all the schools, but Yale fortunately was, we were able to s- to save because I come from Rogers Park, which is a very activist community. Folks got involved that had no real skin in the game, but believed in public education and believe children deserve a good neighborhood school they can walk to. And so it was awesome to just pull together and say no. And it was effective. I believe in people power.
That's really cool. And I know you're part of a nonprofit called One North Side and I'm also, I'm a West Rogers Park resident. And it is pretty just crazy like how many different cultures are just in a short period. Like I think like over a hundred different languages spoken in like a square mile. What is kind of like a through line that connects? Just admire, but also because your district at whole goes all the way to like Lincoln Square.
Yes.
So what connects North Side?
I, I think it's about humanity. I think that as Northsiders, we appreciate and we really connect with folks from all over the world because that's our daily experience is to see people and to hear their different tongues and to recognize they have uh beliefs that are very similar to ours, even though they come from far away. Um and being raised in Rogers Park, that is something that I've practiced and participated in my entire life. We all have value. We all think that especially parents in particular, think that children deserve the very best we can give them. And um people from all over the world teach me more about kindness every day than the people that uh originate from this place. And so I think that um the through line is that everyone has value. And uh we should treat each other as such.
Would that, so what would you say are your kind of like, as a public official, what are your guiding values or principles? Would that be kind of a top one?
Yeah, absolutely. I think we have to provide more equity. Some of our schools are thriving and doing particularly well, and some of our schools are failing in every way. And so how do we make sure that those schools that are been disinvested in over generations have what they need in order to thrive? That's particularly important to me. I've, you know, I've been close to Yale my entire life because they've needed me there. My son attended selected enrollment schools. Where they really didn't need me to volunteer. There were plenty of volunteers. They were, the local school councils were fielded, the PACS. Parent participation was really great. And so I said, well, let me look back at my neighborhood school. What do they need? They need a community person on their local school council. They need support in order to raise money for a health clinic at Yale. So that's what I did, you know, I'm able to work and live and volunteer all in the same place. And so that makes so much meaning for my life, you know, I get to see how my parent uh mentor program um changes lives in families, right? And in real time, I get to see parent mentors being um given jobs at their schools or feeling empowered to go back to school to become teachers and really having principals appreciate um this program that works so well and provide so much uh support for students, especially newly immigrated students.
So one of your opponents has said that eighty percent of his job will be to audit and reform CPS and twenty percent will be on support. How would you kind of reconcile? What would be your kind of mix of how much of the job is like? Perform and change and then are like versus the positive?
I think that it's probably more the opposite of what he's saying. I think that we really have to engage with our communities and figure out what they need specifically. And that anybody who thinks that there's a cure all policy is uh delusional. All of our schools have their own cultures. They all need different things and we really have to have those relationships in order to have the the real idea of what the priorities are. There's definitely going to have to be some budget reform, but um I would like to see the least restrictions on classrooms and teachers and things that directly affect the stakeholders that are most vulnerable.
Well, yeah, I think if a community doesn't have education or security, everything else goes.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I was formed in elementary school, you know, I have a great family, but you spend just as much time with your at your school as you do with your family. And so it's so important to have uh teachers that feel energized and excited about teaching. It's so important to have students that um have a a stable platform so that they can learn. They've eaten, they've slept, they've received counseling if they need it. And the tension that the class sizes aren't so big that students can't be seen and heard and and supported in ways that they need, they uniquely need. So those are the things that I see and know.
So what, so you like you are in a new unique position where you've had so much experience across from CPS to suburban school to HBCU to Northwestern to also placing other teachers. What like, what are some just cool innovations you've seen over the years that you can like bring?
Absolutely. I think community partners are so important. I I see that schools are using uh universities and relationships with universities to help fill in some of the gaps. I think um teachers and people in schools to become teachers should go into the classroom as early as possible, get as much experience as possible. I know that when I went through my teacher chain and program, I wish I had been there all four years because there was so much to learn about classroom management, about social emotional learning, about how to engage children on their own level. And um I think that uh we have so many great uh restorative justice practitioners in our communities. We have so many great therapists and counselors in our communities, so many great artists in our communities. And how do we leverage all those things that are existing on behalf of our children because they need it all?
Oh yeah. So like, and because it's like a new position, so there's just a lot of unknowns is like, what can, what can you do to tap into it? Why?
I think people are talking so much about our budget and what we don't have that it doesn't leave much room to vision and to create from what we do have. I am in schools right now and I see principals doing very innovative things based on relationships that they're cultivating. I think relationships are so important in order to get the things that we need. Uh I've been there for folks. Folks have been there for me. It seems like a natural thing to ask for what we need from the people that can give it to us.
And so a lot of what you said seems like it would be free, like to tap into like an artist in the community.
I would, you know, there are things that are being funded right now that we can leverage on behalf of our schools. Right? That that we, you know, we, I really like the idea of a sustainable school model, a school that stays open all day long. Where resources can be received for parents and families and community members inside the school so that there's a real uh information gap. Parents are working so hard. They don't know what's available to them. I think also that we have to take a strong look at our families and our communities and the um economic changes that are happening so quickly. Rents are going up, food is going up. And so how do we maintain our economic diversity? We're gonna have to figure that out as we develop schools because the communities will dramatically change if we don't figure out how to bring families up with schools. And so because I'm an organizer, I know that education intersects with housing, it intersects with um healthcare, it intersects with everything that's uh part of our daily lives. And so we can't turn a blind eye to children's needs and their families' needs while we support them in one area of their lives.
You do admit and like everyone admits that like there needs to be like some reforms and cuts like, and even even CTU and their proposal is proposing some cuts. Where would that, where would, like, where do you think is the area of waste?
I'm not sure we're in the best contracts right now with uh folks that we do business with. There's a lot in the budget we don't know because they, it hasn't been transparent in the past, but like I said, the the daily access of what our children needs, the teaching, the teaching bodies, the uh support staffs and measures. Those things we need to protect because we know they're making a difference in our, our children's daily lives. Other things, um we know that most of the budget goes to salaries. So maybe we need to take a closer look at some of the folks that are not in the classroom. Maybe we need to take some uh a look at some of our contract work. Um and make sure that we're getting um the best, the best services at the best cost. I'm not sure that that's been a strong consideration in the past.
No, well, I mean, in the past, speaking of the past, is I got a huge, like a boogeyman from CPS's past, Paul Valas has been sending out spam text messages against you. And uh for one, he's calling you a puppet, which I think is very disrespectful. And like one, I like, like, I like one, like, kind of, how does that, because it does kind of feel dehumanizing? How does that, how does that feel? And like? What is your response when someone says you're a puppet of CTU and Brandon Johnson? It was what Paul Valas said. Who I blame for a lot of CPS's problems and maybe we could discuss that, but.
Absolutely, right? Uh you know, I think it's the pot calling the kettle black, right? I really I don't appreciate it. Of course it's hurtful, but at the same time, you know, I am in this position because I have relationships and because I have integrity and because so many local organizations and local elected officials have known me over the years and support my work. I have over thirty endorsements from community organizations and elected officials by far surpassing all of my competition by far. And so that means that I've been putting in the work for years. People know who I am. They trust me to lead in this because they know this is a uh, this is our opportunity to be as representative and as transparent as possible. I don't know this guy. I've never heard of him before. Like we have no idea who's pulling the strings with him.
Well, we kind of knew, well, that's why I do think it is a little pot calling the kettle black. Cause it seems like you have three opponents, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Like, cause you are, like, I would say you differentiate yourself with your experience and education compared to your opponents. Is that fair to say? That you have the most like direct and indirect experience in CPS?
Yes.
Yeah.
My work is in schools now.
Some of the other candidates. A little bit.
Yes. Yes.
And so, but speaking of the Paul Valas Eric, I think that was the nineteen nineties in CPS, what would you say are some of the highs and lows?
I graduated from high school in nineteen ninety-five and I think I just missed the new funding model that became a per pupil model that devastated so many of our community schools, especially where poor folks live because poor people move a lot, right? And so the fluctuations in the school attendance was constantly changing. I know that uh where I live in Rogers Park, there are several um shelters and temporary housing. And when people move on to permanent housing, we should not be um taken away from the local school because people are in a better place and more secure. Uh we should be looking at that as an opportunity to improve schools so that more folks come back that are local. I think school choice became a big deal in the nineties. When I was a kid, everybody walked to the neighborhood school and there weren't a lot of options. People were invested in neighborhood schools and then uh when people um saw the disinvestment because of the per pupil model, they moved away from neighborhood schools more and more. Then that brought more disinvestment and it's been so cyclical for the last thirty years. So uh that's another thing that is so important to me is that I know Chicago Public Schools and Neighborhood Schools can offer very strong foundations. I received one. So I walked to my neighborhood high school and was ready for college. I want that for every child in the city.
Especially in the, most of the school happens during the winter, so.
Absolutely. In the dark, in the cold. And our children our children are, I'm sorry.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. I'm really sorry about that. There was a tech glitch.
Our children are safest where they're known, right? I had a lot of safety because people knew me, they knew my mom and they looked out for me. And so I think it's important to bring all of that value system back. Because um it takes a village. It really does take a village to build a strong child.
So I'm Jewish and the Jewish community a huge issue. I think there's fifty thousand Jews in Roger, West Rogers Park. And uh private schooling is a big issue for like religious reasons. For example, in American culture, uh football happens on Friday night lights. Can't do that in the Jewish community who's celebrating Shabbat. What do you say to voters who are in the private school system, sometimes out of like religious necessity?
Yes, um I see you. I know that you need some things from Chicago Public Schools. I want to keep supporting those systems. Uh also, you know, I think that there could be more interaction um and that um every child needs something different and I respect that. I've been a parent and I know the pressures of providing the best possible um education for children. And so, yeah, I I just think that it's our right and responsibility to do what we can for our children and uh I acknowledge that it's something that is necessary. Every community needs something different.
Absolutely. And you've also acknowledged how like, how the quality of education really connects to everything in a community. But my question is, this is a little bit of ignorance. Are our kids that are outside the system that go to private schools? Do they like? Do they have access to CPS like resources, including like after school programs? And like mental health resources?
Yes, there's been a lot of overlap, overlap over the years. Um special education resources are also given to um students in a private school system. Uh it's not adequate. It's not adequate anywhere. Um and I think that we should take a strong look at that, you know, um and you know, what can we be as a um in a reciprocal way, right? What does the Jewish community have to give to Chicago Public Schools? Because there's lots of great programming, early intervention in the community. I've met recently with some of the resource folks in your community and I know there used to be a lot more interaction and we can have that again. In terms of after school and early childhood and.
So how to the deep questions? How do we, it's like, there, there's a lot of this deep issues with school? Like what, like what are, like, what do you think are the best ways to like? I guess include, include the the quality, like what would be the kind of the top priorities to improve the quality of education?
I think hearing from the folks that are most directly affected, we need to hear from students. We need to hear from local school council members. We need to hear from the administrators and the teachers because they've not been heard in the past. I think that it's really been a, a power over situation all along with whoever's been on the school board. And I, I'm ready to have power with community members. I'm ready to hear their needs and figure out our priorities together. I, I would love to make decisions in the first couple of years to affect the most children associated with the system, right? And so how do we figure that out?
So if I give you a magic pen, well, what would, and you can like, you know, and all the councilmen kind of have to follow you, maybe like the men in black, the like Jedi mind trick, uh what would be one, one change that would you make? Would it be classroom sizes or what would, what if you had to just pick one? Unfortunately.
Yes, if I had to just pick one.
Yeah, no disrespect to any other.
I think classroom sizes would be huge. I think classroom sizes would be so significant. Um I think that students that feel seen and students who um can communicate their need is so effective to how teachers adapt to their curriculum and adapt to individuality. All of our children have gifts and all of our children have obstacles and that is something that we need to recognize as early as possible. If I had another magic wand, I'd double down on early childhood because there is so much that can be learned before the age of five that would give our children so much security throughout their lives.
I mean, so speaking of, I was having some technical difficulties before this interview. Is uh what, like what, uh what are your thoughts on the importance of teaching technology and STEM skills?
Oh my God, it's the whole future, right? We really have to think about how we've been educated and how that's preparing our children for the future. Um we know that a lot of jobs that exist now won't exist in the next fifteen, twenty years. And so how do we make sure that our students understand what pathways are available to them? And build the skills that are going to be necessary. I think language is going to be huge because we live in a global society. I think tech is obviously uh gonna lead in so many ways. I, I would love to see the sciences come back. We used to be first in everything around science and innovation. I think that would be remarkable to bring that back. Um and there's going to be a need for all the careers that are going to be left um totally uh depleted in the next generations, which are plumbers, electricians, construction folks. And uh so there, there's a lot of possibility. I'm excited about it, but we definitely have to think about the future and uh get away from some of the old traditional learning that we've had for a hundred years.
Which tech kind of like, how can we keep the good tech in the classroom and front off the bad tech? Like a kids using chat GPT to write papers and things like that?
Oh, and that's challenging. I don't know if we're prepared for how far uh tech has come. I know that uh there are certain platforms that can um tell whether or not you're plagiarizing, but I don't know if we're ready for chat GPT because it's doing something different, right?
Yeah.
Um I think too, you know, it it's a tool, right? It's a hammer, you know, it depends on how we use it. And so I think it's about uh talking to our kids about integrity, talking to them about um experimentation, but also talking to them about how um innovation can sometimes leave us in a worse place uh if it is not used correctly.
Very, very, very true. And uh so this, you're running for politics, which is just, it's weird because it's like you're, you know, you're in the political world, like how, how are you navigating that? And what are your like philosophies on the campaign itself? Do you kind of have lines that you, you know, that you won't cross on attacking opponents and stuff like that?
Absolutely. I think that um I come from a place of grassroots organizations working together to elect the most progressive folks in our communities, people who have demonstrated uh community care, people with lived experience, people who um will represent us in ways that we've never been represented before. And I just feel like I'm in that vein. I am working to do those things. I'm excited about the opportunity of like representing people. You know, and their needs and not um being a hero, but just being a champion within among other champions. I, I am a vessel for the greater good of our community. I don't see I don't think we were prepared for this election. People um were not talking about this because we're constantly on the defense of keeping and maintaining what we already have, but um I stepped forward because I wasn't hearing other voices from our communities, from our coalitions, from our allies that I could trust and that other people could trust. And people uh asked me, would I be willing to lead on this? And I saw that as an opportunity to and it just seemed like the natural progression of the work that I'm already doing. I'm accountable to my communicate, my community in uh education already. And so now I'm just extending the community. Now I'm just giving us more access to what we need. And um I think that it's the way that the race is designed now. We're, we're gonna have to figure out other ways, I think, if we're gonna want the best kinds of people involved with this. I have a political organization working for me and with me. I don't know that everybody with the best values and the best experience moving forward would be able to do that without that kind of pow- access to power and access to people. So I'm really concerned about that. It's really the way, the, the way that the uh system is performing now. It's designed for those with the most privilege, the most time, the most uh resourced uh associates. And I don't know if that's going to give us the best quality candidates moving forward unless super concerning to me.
So it sounds like you need a lot of passion to kind of over overcome a lot of like the negative and institutional like setbacks. Cause I assume you needed thousands of signatures, that kind of thing and like go through a legal process. And Illinois, like, I don't have the answers. I want to ask you the question is Illinois has to have at least twenty thousand elected officials or something like that. Is how, how do we have equity in that? Cause I, I agree with you that it's probably a lot of people that are connected are bored or don't have any skills or have a huge uh like ego problem. So how do we attract better candidates when it's such a negative process that has a lot of hurdles?
Max, that is a hard question to answer, but I work with so many women of color and it I associate with them regularly and I think I want to be just the first of many. When you look at Chicago Public Schools, three out of the four children are black and brown. So I, especially in our community, this race should be filled with diverse bodies and it's not. Um I think that the election season is too long. I think it costs too much. And so how do we figure out some of those things in order to put the best people that represent us and have the best values upfront? I think if we fix the system, we'd uh attract better candidate pools.
Yeah, people kind of have people to uh look to. So who, who do you look, look to for like, for kind of like political inspiration?
Um I have so much, I have so much political inspiration and that's huge privilege for me, right? I have my older person, Maria Haddon. I have my state senator, Mike, uh, oh Lord. You know, Mike Simmons.
Yeah.
You know, I have Rosanna Rodriguez, Delia, Graciela. I have so much inspiration, people of color who love their communities, who have lived experience, who want to be in service. Because they've benefited so much from being supported and loved on and just want to return that, you know? Uh when we talk together, it's just like we finish each other's sentences, right? And so I've done some work to elect some of them. They're helping me and you know, we'll be there for the next round of whoever we find to be in that vein as well. This is about servicing our community. It's not about, you know, adding something to our resume. It's not about, you know, uh meet, meeting more powerful people so that we can build power for our own individual need or want.
Maybe for you, like you can speak for yourself. Cause it seems like a lot of people are in it for to get tickets to the wine and cheese party to meet the leader of either, either party, doesn't matter. And I think a lot of Republicans and Democrats really don't, then they're not debating politics. They're debating like who gets a better seat at the whatever pop stars at the Olivia Rodrigo concert.
I don't even know who that is, so you don't have to worry.
Good.
Okay.
How do we keep, let's keep that out of public schools too.
And our children are just too important for this to be about anything other than them. Like they're our future and I know them and I cannot uh turn away from their need. Uh having those relationships, I think, makes me the most uh determined and accountable in this race is because I know the people who are most uh directly affected.
And speaking, we're probably running low on time and kind of bringing it full circle uh with the kids. Is how can you use your position to make them more civically engaged or more, give them more civic opportunities?
Absolutely. I think we have a great uh opportunity to make sure that our college senior, I mean, our high school seniors are registered to vote, have education on how to select uh among their values. I mean, our high school seniors are registered to vote, have education on how to select uh among their values. I think that critical thinking is so necessary and has to be practiced regularly. And I think civics is a great place to start, right? How do we receive our news? How do we tr- trust what we read? A lot of folks are getting their news from the internet and how do we uh research the sites and understand what truth is? I come from a time where the news couldn't report anything other, and I want to bring that value back. Uh so I think there's a lot of great uh ways for us to engage with our young people and definitely get them voting. Why are we n- not registering kids to vote as they become eligible to vote?
Well, I I think there's a lot of lack of civic engagement on on both sides. Because I really, I mean, I honestly, I want more, like, I probably wouldn't vote for an eighteen-year-old, but I ran for office when I was young and it was a very good learning experience. So I do, and like I also was, I was an intern on a congressional campaign when I was sixteen. I ate a lot of pizza and like I wasn't the best intern, but it was a great experience. I wish they were more involved because I think they could really be a good, because they have the most energy to really put you in check if you go.
Them so much. I'm so proud that young people are working on my campaign, right? Like, young people are uh canvassing on my behalf because they believe in me and I have relationship with them, right? I think it's so important that we engage young people as early as possible so that they know that they can be a part of the process, right? And it's it's another reason why it's important for people like me to run because we need young women of color to know that their voice is, it matters and that leading is where we belong.
I mean, amazing. Any final words or any like important lessons from a Chicago Public School teacher or any teacher?
Oh, my goodness. I have so many wonderful teachers along the way that have influenced me in so many ways. I think teachers with hobbies are so incredible, right? Like, they really stretch our imaginations and challenge our ideas of of what's possible outside of the classrooms. I love that. I love, um I had a class just where we read newspaper stories together and we just debated the the facts of what was going on and how people should proceed and all those things. I think current events is so good and useful for kids to think about, think critically about. I think that we just have a um a a great opportunity for kids to um learn in ways that haven't been provided before and learn in ways that feel personal and exciting for them. And um really develop the leaders that we deserve. Every, all of them are going to be in charge one day. And I want the best educated, most creative and most liberated young people that we have, that we've ever had going forward. So that would be my dream.
I'm I'm okay with the dream and I live here. So thank you so much for your time. I'm glad. Thanks for coming on the record. For the kids, where can they find you on social media and website?
Yes, Ebony Four, the number four education. Um you should find my socia's there. You can also find my website there. And uh in twenty days, uh hopefully, well, you'll see me out there more regularly, ready to roll my sleeves up and do the work. This part is just bluff. The work is the real.
Time. So, yeah, everyone, make sure to vote. Uh you have less than a month to vote. And on you also on your website, you can really find a more comprehensive version of your plan and what you'll do, which I appreciate as a voter. So thank you so much. Thank you for coming on the record.
Thank you. Nice meeting you guys.
Nice meeting you as well.